Well, good morning, everybody again. It's March 12th, 2019. This is a regular Commissioner's Court meeting of Starr County. The judge is not here, also undecided. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in your package. I was hoping to report on our Real Law Commission audit that was held by February 12th through 15th, but my official report hasn't come in, so I don't have nothing to add to it. Are there any questions to you?
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Good morning, Commissioners. I did leave our financial report for the month in your package. Nothing major can change during working operational period. If you have any questions on that.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in front of you. The total current collections from February 2018 were 2,450,000. In February 2017, they were 1,575,000. There was a total collection of 875,000 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 2,278,000 more than last year. Our total current collections for Starr County entities are 1,305,000 collections. Current collections in February 2017 were 746,000. There was a total current collection of 558,000 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 1,158,000 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for 2018 just for Starr County were 238,000. Total delinquent collections in February 2017 were 242,000. There was a total delinquent collection of 3,800 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 182,000 more than last year. We have collected 95 percent of our projected current tax collection 2018 this year. Projected collections remaining are 648,240 dollars. The projected collections in the budget were 13,47,303 dollars.
So, we have collected...
Any questions?
We have collected 95 percent of the budgeted amount?
Of the projected budget amount. Yes.
Which is dollars amount, you know how much is left and we got?
13,47,303 dollars.
That's the budget?
That's the remaining of collections.
When in dollar sign, how much more money are we lacking to come to the estimated collection?
Well, we have a remaining of 648,240 dollars.
640?
Excuse me?
That's to completely 100 percent.
The 100 percent projected amount.
640,000.
Yes. Any questions?
None.
Thank you.
Mr. Wazali?
All right. (Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
(Inaudible) reported for the month of February 2018, 216,218 dollars. That is less than last month at 233,479 dollars. Difference is the two days that we lost the cover. That's an average of about 50,000 dollars over two days that we lost the money. We did make up the difference between February 2017 and February 2018 as an additional 72,786 dollars from last year. We're running the average of 147 federal delegates at this time.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Good morning. This is the report for February 2018, and the total revenue for traffic is 205,585 cents. And we show an increase of 975 for the month of February 2018 compared to the month of February 2017. And we also show an increase of 2,782 with 50 cents on collections for the month of February 2018 compared to the month of January 2018. Currency for total traffic collections, the grand total collection for February 2018 is 206,157 with 49 cents. You have any questions? No? Thank you.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Good morning. The General Fund had 2,204,884 dollars with 80 cents. This is 600,000 dollars more than at the same time last year. The Road and Bridge Fund had 1.2 million dollars, and this is 912,000 dollars more than at the same time last year. The total amount of cash in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of this period covered by this report is 13.9 million dollars. This overall amount is 2.7 million dollars more than at the same time last year. We continue to monitor depository accounts to ensure their safety. Combined debt for the Starr County was 4.3 million dollars, being 1.3 million dollars more than at the same time last year. The county's amount in deposits were well collateralized at 105 percent. This pledge level is 5 percent above the LGC Chapter 2257.022 requirements and right under contract terms with Lone Star National Bank. The 2018 budget includes the borrowing of a new 1 million dollar tax anticipation note. The borrowing of a new 1 million dollar note is still pending state approval. It is also necessary to report that if the state does not approve this new note, then the county will have to lower the 2018 budget an additional 1 million dollars. This pre-borrowing process may take 45 to 90 days, and since the county started this year with a negative fund balance in its operating fund, it is important to take action to prevent another Starr County budget shutdown. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? No. (Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Yes, as the treasurer stated, that 1 million dollar loan is in our budget. It was anticipated many months ago that this would be required, and I believe that prediction is accurate. I believe we will need that million dollar loan before the end of the year. The exact timing is really hard to predict. I'm working on a cash flow projection to try to get an answer for that question, but because of the lag time, the lead time that it takes to complete that process, I believe it would be prudent to go ahead and start that application process as soon as possible.
Mr. Carter, we're six months into the budget. If everyone stays within budget, we still need it?
Yes, we will still need it. Yes.
Let me ask you one thing. How much are we still owing at the bank right now at this point in time?
Not long.
Um, let me get my glasses. I've got my glasses on.
We did pay off the 2.5 million. There's other borrowing that we have pending for equipment, and the loan to the City of Roma is way, way, way past its delinquency. I don't understand why the City of Roma is not pressuring for their money, and it's growing every month because we're still paying at the level from before the bridge level went up. The bridge is not bringing any more additional money than it did last year. As you heard the numbers, it's in the 2,000 dollar increase or decrease compared to February of last year. If you do not borrow now, and you borrow later, and you find out from the state that they're not going to let you borrow, where are you going to get the money from? So, you are in a situation...
I'm fine with that. What do we need to do to get the process going? We need to get it going. We don't want to be stuck again like last year in that way or bill. What do we need to do to start the process? The more of the other...
What you need to do is authorize the investment officer to start the process of obtaining the permission. The way that the budget was presented by Commissioner Albutis, it provides for a recovery plan. And given the fact that you have a recovery plan, I'm sure that the state will concur with you and will agree with you that you can borrow that money.
But, Mr. Carter, we're in a crisis here, right? We can afford for Judge Miller to come back. He continues to be the budget officer. I think he needs to be here to address the problem. I think that's what they want.
Well, like I said, Mr. Carter said, it better have it, and not need it than need it not have it, so...
We can hide that until the judge is here.
Well, I don't have a problem. We need to get it going.
Wait a couple of weeks. We're in a emergency crisis here.
That's fine.
But, I don't mind. By the way, court sides.
But, any type of borrowing, any type of borrowing other than a tax anticipation note would be illegal and would not be allowed. If the state does not authorize the borrowing, then you will have to do with what you have, and you're going to have to shut down. But, it can wait a couple of weeks.
Okay. We'll wait for the judge. But, if it's Mr. Carter is saying that we need it, probably, you know...
He was buzzing.
Well, wait, no problem.
You're going to need it as long as it's in the budget. If you amend the budget and take it off, then you don't need it. But, remember that the chair of department still needs money for the car, still needs money for the gas, still needs money for the...
Everybody needs money.
Well, the jail that's... The jail that's...
You're not doing with that the money we don't have.
That's up to you.
Hopefully, I'll come to justice back.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Better age, Mr. Carter?
Yes, Commissioners, you have my report in your package. The report is rather lengthy. I'll not read it verbatim. I'll try to summarize it as we go through it. Roman numeral number one, the fund balances for the period ending February 28th, 2018. The general fund cash available was 2,607,286 dollars and 14 cents. The Road and Bridge Fund cash available was 855,272 cents, and the payroll clearing fund cash available was 1,127,767,19. The expenditure report is summarized as follows. The total budget as amended was 17,729,224 dollars. The year-to-date expended was 8,627,609 dollars, leaving an available balance of 9,101,658,615 dollars. The percent expended was 48.66 percent, and that compares to the percent of the year elapsed to 41.4 percent. So, we're a little ahead of our expenditures overall. In general, that difference is accounted for by the loan payment when we paid off Lone Star National Bank that 2.5 million dollar loan. Within the general fund are the following departments. The county judge, the budget amount was 412,672 dollars. The year-to-date expended is 148,900. Percent expended was 36.08. The county clerk, the percent expended was 40.84 percent. The human resources department, the percent expended was 37.69 percent. The planning department was 39.79 percent. Federal and state programs department was 38.04 percent. The countywide general fund as amended, percent expended was 65.72, and that's so high because of that loan payment to Lone Star National Bank. The contract for 911 services department, percent expended was 37.83 percent. The county court at law, percent expended was 36.42. The 2029th District Court, percent expended was 45.76. The 381st District Court, percent expended was 42.14. The district clerk, percent expended was 36.32. The county attorney, percent expended was 45.49. The district attorney, percent expended was 33.05. The county auditor's department, percent expended is 33.64. The county treasurer's department, percent expended is 38.67. The tax assessor collector department, percent expended was 34.67. The building maintenance department, percent expended was 33.52. The detention center, percent expended was 43.58. The juvenile detention center, percent expended was 37.30. The sheriff's department, percent expended was 40.95. The agricultural extension service department, percent expended was 35.32. The nutrition program for all four precincts combined, percent expended was 43.64. In the Road and Bridge Fund, the total budget...
Can you zoom on the nutrition program? That 43 percent number is higher than the normal. Can you find out what precinct or what nutrition program is spending more than the half?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, you know...
It's combined.
Compared to the percent of the year elapsed, it's poquito above, but not really significant. I didn't see anything significant there. But, yes, I can get a breakdown for you by precinct if you'd like that information. To continue with the Road and Bridge Fund, the overall, the total consolidated expenditures were 37.91 percent. To break that down by precinct, precinct number one, percent expended is 36.83. Precinct number two, percent expended is 37.35. Precinct number three was 43.8. Precinct number four was 36.93, and the countywide Road and Bridge Fund, percent expended was 35.2. Following that, on page, in the middle of page five, the expenditure report for the enterprise funds. The international bridge, percent expended is 28.4. The gas operating system, percent expended is 35.01. The solid waste transfer station, percent expended is 37.15. At the bottom of page five, we start the summary of the revenue report. Within the general fund, current taxes, percent received are 84.72. Delinquent taxes are 35.89. The nutrition program grant is at 34.4. The indigent defense grant is at zero. The 911 services grant is at zero. The fees of office collected are 37.35 percent. The detention center is at 43.98 percent. The international bridge transfers at 21.43 percent, and transfers from the gas system and the transfer station are at zero, and the note, the budgeted loan is at zero because we just talked about that. In the Road and Bridge Fund, at the bottom of page six, the revenue from the current taxes, percent received is 83.26. Delinquent taxes is 45.01. Motor vehicle licenses is zero, and my department, myself, is investigating that because I know the... I know we have revenue from the motor vehicle licenses. Apparently, it's not being booked into the correct fund, so we'll make a journal. We'll find that and make a journal entry to correct it, and hopefully, we'll have a better number for you next month. Fines and forfeitures were 22.43 percent. Vehicle weight fees were at 52 percent. Bridge tolls were at 35.7 percent. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the international bridge line now. Yes. For the international bridge, the percent received from bridge tolls is 35.7 percent of the budgeted amount. The rent from Ueta is 33.33 percent, and rent from a port facility is 32.17 percent. From the gas operating system, the revenue from natural gas sales is 42.37 percent collected year-to-date compared to the budgeted amount. The solid waste transfer station, the tipping fees collected year-to-date are 37.14 percent compared to the budgeted amount. At the bottom of page seven is a detailed listing of the debt that Starr County currently owes. First on the list is the Tax Note Series 2014 payable to Lone Star National Bank. matures September 15th, 2021, has a current balance of 303,471 dollars. The payment is 81,011 dollars annually, and it's paid from the general fund. The fine that's owed to the Texas Controller of Public Accounts has a current balance of 25,819 dollars. That's payable 13,000 dollars quarterly. It matures later this year on August 15th, and it's payable from the general fund. The Certificate of Obligation 2004, payable to U.S. Bank, matures August 15th of next year. Has a current balance of 1,077,056 dollars. It's payable 520,000 dollars principal annually and interest semi-annually. And that bond is paid from the Interest and Zinking Fund. There's an equipment loan payable to KS State Bank with a current balance of 683,409 dollars. That's payable 99,699 dollars annually. matures October 10th, 2025, and that's payable from the Road and Bridge Fund. And then there is a loan to a company called Revenue Markets, and this is for the equipment at the international bridge. Has a current balance of 169,615 dollars. matures December 22nd, 2018, and that's payable from the international bridge fund. And then on page eight is a summary of the unpaid invoices, and I'm informing the court that there are insufficient funds in certain budget line items to pay these invoices. The adult probation department has a line item called Indigent Care and an invoice of 447 dollars dated November 30th. The county court at law has eight invoices for Adlitem attorney fees, total 3,425 dollars. The 229th District Court has 10 invoices for Adlitem attorney fees, total 4,000 dollars. And the 381st District Court has 26 invoices for Adlitem attorney fees, a total 6,893,75 cents.
How are we going to address this problem, Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry?
How are we going to address this problem? We need a budget amendment, right?
Yes, it will take a budget amendment to...
What responsibility is to make it or to submit the budget amendment?
Well, it could come from several sources. It could come from Commissioners, or it could come from the department heads. Not the auditor's office and not the treasurer's office. We're not in the...
Where about it is?
Okay.
May it's the opinion of the court? Yes, but they should make the budget amendment, and it's up to the Commissioners Court to approve it.
The...
Is that correct?
Well, the issue is that the total budgeted revenue is 100 percent allocated. There's no surplus of funds, and there's no fund balance left over from last year. So, the issue is, where do we find the... So, the issue is, where do we find the revenue to allocate additional expenditures to these, to these line items? That's a, you know-
We have to have it, we're gonna have to have, get it from the loan that we're seeking to-
No, that, that money's already, the loan's already budgeted. It's, it's already, it's already allocated.
Okay, with our other one extra to, to pay those-
Well, if you're gonna do that, you need to anticipate what's going to happen for the rest of the year and, and borrow it all at once and not, because you can't, you can't go to the bank every month, okay? You, you've got to anticipate what you're gonna do for the rest of the year.
Go out there and ask for two million then.
Well-
Instead of one, ask for two million. And then if we got money left, we'll pay it back. If not, we'll-
Okay.
We need to finish the, the year, either way.
We, there isn't, there is, and there is something that needs to be reported to this court. I'd like to inform you that what has, a, a very fortunate thing has happened. Apparently, there was a wind farm constructed partly in Starr County that was not discovered until after October first. So, it was not on the tax rolls. It was discovered by the appraisal district and put on the tax rolls and reported to the tax assessor. The tax assessor followed the normal procedures to collect the taxes, and those taxes have been paid. And it's a significant amount. It's, uh, it, the-
How much is it?
Well, the, I don't have the breakdown in front of me. The, the total collected was seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but part of that goes to the hospital district, the college district, the drainage, the drainage district, and the, the city of Escobaras and all of the other tax, taxing entities that the, that the tax office services. I don't have the exact amount for, for the general fund or for the, and the Road and Bridge Fund. But in order to, in order to follow the legal process and do this correctly, the court would have to ask me to certify that revenue as being available. Now, the, the check's been deposited, the check is in the bank, the funds are, the funds are available. But there is a legal process that the auditor is required to certify that, 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 that money is available to be budgeted. So, we can, we can pay these invoices that are outstanding, their past due, and time is of the essence, but we, we can't pay them. What we don't know is what's gonna happen for the rest of the year and how, how much more it, how much additional budget, the funds are gonna need to be budgeted.
The tax collector, you were the one that collected, you have distributed that money already, don't you?
Yes.
To every, and what, how much was left for the county? Maybe five hundred thousand?
Well, I don't have the information with me. I gave Mr. Carter the receipt and where it said in my-
It should be, at least half a million, ain't it?
It was like four hundred for the county.
Four hundred?
Four hundred.
Yes, it's right.
If, we're, we're fully aware that there's additional revenue, and there's, there's a couple of others too, that are gonna come in this fiscal year, but at the end of the day, you still need the million.
Well, we're, we're holding, we're-
Those additional revenues will be to cover those additional expenses for the indigent defense fund of a hundred and fifty and all that other stuff that's still pending. But you still need the loan, and you can amend it now with those money and be able to, because if a district judge signs an order to pay, I think it's a mandate.
Let me ask you, but how much more money, you said there's more money coming in? How much are we talking about that the county would actually receive? At least a hundred thousand, it's in four hundred and fifty, which I doubt is that, that very, that little, I think it's more than that, but, okay, then take four fifty.
I do know exactly how much.
I know, I understand, I understand. But let's say that we have four hundred and fifty, what else is coming in?
Duke Energy also paid some money for the settlement, and you also have a Los Olmos Creek project that was never built and was never done, it, uh-
We already used that money, didn't we?
No, it hasn't been transferred, it wasn't, but yeah. And you, and you allocated it or you took it from the county?
We, we only have what Duke Energy paid, supposed to pay, but they only paid for half of this year, half of, of the, of the coming year. There is not very much, it's only a hundred and some. But anyway, let's make, we have five hundred thousand. That would cover that, and we only need the million dollars, both of it.
He'll tell me the million.
He'll tell me the loan. Well, what do we need to do, Mr. Carter, to certify those money that have come in and put them in the budget so we can get, take care of that?
Um-
Budget? You have to have a line item on it.
I'd like to see, I'd, I'd like to see a budget amendment request from the court.
Yes, but, I mean, but we can do that later on. Right now, we had, we, for you to, for you to certify those money that are here that can be spent, and then we worry about the budget amendment, where they're gonna be spent. Anyway, it's county money, ain't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we need for you to certify that we have extra money that came in and was not anticipated, and then we'll go from there. See, how much can we accept from the budget amendment? Maybe, we can call it, maybe not.
Is your, is your statement the official request of the court that I do that? I mean, that's, that's what it takes.
Do we need a night item or we can just? Can we take action on this report ultimately?
Uh, you can take action on the report at this point, yes.
What?
We can't take action on it based on-
Will you make the motion?
Yes.
Giving information to certify over?
Yes. Okay, if it's coming out of the report directly from this certain, sort of situation, yes.
Okay, so I move that we, I'd like Mr. Carter to certify the monies, bring them to the budget, taking a vote. If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Sykes, any, any more discussion? If not all those in favor signify by a A and I? Or the post same sign, motion carried. You got it?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on our court?
And then we'll, we'll wait, see how much actual money it, that we have circled, and then we start worrying about how much, but, how much budget, budget amendment could be approved?
Yeah, exactly. That, that would be the process. You've requested the auditor to certify that, once he certifies that amount, then it comes back to the commission's court to post an agenda item to amend the budget as passed in October, in September.
Okay, sir. Excellent.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Item number six, this doesn't take action to, through new vendor list, the county actually left, I don't need this.
The list, the vendor's list.
Oh, the vendor's list, uh, I'm sorry. Well, the vendor's list has been reviewed and the, the new vendors listed are all in order.
Same order, no? Actually, they both by Commissioner Sykes, uh, Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by a A and I? Or the post same, same sign, motion carried. Carry on, Mr. Carter. Item number seven, this doesn't take action to officially open all sealed proposals for financial lobbying services. Mr. Carter, we're, they're here.
No, I've got a knife here. Uh, there's a knife.
Very sealed.
I made these really safe. My crocodile don't de-seed. That's a knife.
I don't need to look like it because-
Yeah, um, we have a proposal from Atigo Brown and Hill LLP, who is the, which is the firm that has done our audits for the last several years. Let me see if I can see what it says here.
Can you review it, Mr. Carter, and then we send him to the court, please, in court? More, more advantageous to the court?
Actually, at a, at a prior meeting, the court appointed a committee to, to review these. Commissioner Pena is on the committee, and I believe you are Commissioner, no?
No, I am, are, with me, you and the, and the judge.
And the judge?
Right.
And Commissioner Pena. Well, could we, could we schedule a meeting sometime to review these?
I think I was on that one, looking at the, it was Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Pena, myself and the auditor.
Yeah, non-core, no?
We have, we have a proposal from Atigo Brown and Hill, the firm that has done our audits for the last few, several years, and we have a proposal from Oscar R. Sanchez, CPA and Associates, P O L C, of Florida, Texas. And so, um, we'll have to, we'll have to review these in detail and report back to the, to the court.
We should be recommended by, we should take an auditor every three years, every two, three, four times, but I'm, I'm at the very, you know, we need to see what, what the case for the other department.
Okay. We'll try to have a report for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paper or blank?
Item number eight.
No, that's a number. Nine, ten?
No, sorry.
Number seven, no.
This doesn't take action to approve equality five streetlights at twenty-eighty-fourth street corner of twenty-three, third second street and triangle three, the zero lane and back hole of FM six fifty and Monte Street in Long Texas. I move we approve the request as a matter of permission, Commissioner Pena? If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Sykes, any discussion? Not all those in favor, say five, say nine? Or the post same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, this doesn't take action to approve auction proceed in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars to be deposited to the Road and Bridge Fund on Star County percent three, I mean. Precinct two hundred-
Many mistake.
Many mistake. No, turn around, we pay.
Most pleasant.
Share the work here. If they move by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? All of the favor say five, say nine? Or the post same sign, motion carried. Item number ten, this doesn't take action to accept donations in the amount of one hundred and ninety-three dollars from Joel Garcia to Star County Food Petri Briefing, right? A four? Proceed. Proceed. If they move by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? Not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign, motion carried. Item number eleven, this doesn't take action to approve the South Texas College Collection Fee Contract for, for the taxable year of two thousand and eight three at three point five percent. Is that it?
Yes, sir, ma'am. Just, since the renewal of the contract that we have over here with a three point five percent collection.
I move we approve it.
Say yeah.
If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Sykes, any discussion? If not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign, motion carried. Okay. Items twelve to twenty-two, it is resolution by Maricela Iwana, which is a normal procedure for all the grants, and I think we can take them all at one time, Mr.?
Is there general, is the court wish to do that?
Yeah, okay.
Do I want to specifically discuss it?
Twenty, twelve to twenty-two?
Yes. I accept the motion and I let Maricela have something on that specifically.
No, that is correct. It's gonna be twelve to, uh, number-
Twenty-two.
Uh, twenty.
Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, twenty-one. Twenty-two is gonna be a different grant. Twenty-one and twenty-two is a different grant.
Okay, up to twenty?
Twenty.
Twelve to twenty, that is correct.
Move to best, twelve to twenty-one.
Twenty to twenty?
Twenty, to twenty.
If they move by, if they move by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? If not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign, motion carried. Okay, item twenty-one, this doesn't take action to appoint Maricela Iwana as a labor standard officer for the Texas, uh, Texas General Land Office Contract, E R S two-two-zero-one-nine. I should move that.
Second.
If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Sykes, any discussion? If not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign, motion carried. Item twenty-two, this doesn't take action to approve a resolution to authorize signature for the Texas General Land Office Contract, uh, D R S two-two-zero-one-nine, Maricela Iwana.
That is correct. And what it is, it's just authorizing for signatories, uh, for, uh, deposits, uh, which is the normal procedure. It's Judge Vetta, uh, the auditor, Mr. Carter, and the treasurer, Mr. Pena.
Move that.
Two more.
If they move, second, any discussion? Not all those in favor, say five, say nine? Post same sign, motion carried.
Twenty-two.
Uh, twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two, I'm on it.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. Item number twenty-three, this doesn't take action to approve resolution in support of body worn cameras for the Chair of Department? I move we approve the resolution, second. If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Sykes, any discussion? If not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign, motion carried. Item twenty-four, this doesn't take action to approve resolution for the Starr County Border Interdiction Unit Grant, number one eight four two eight one three, Chair, uh, Department, the Chair, Chair Department? I move we approve the resolution, second. If they move by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner, Commissioner Sykes, any discussion? If not all those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Or the post same sign. Okay, we will get, we get, um-
Twenty-five.
Five to thirty, this is the resolution- This is the resolution to approve the grants for Mr. Omar's squad.
Move the best.
Share the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hight, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by a a nine?
Aye.
Or the opposed same side, motion carried. Okay, item thirty-one to thirty-four, this is budget amendment, are they in order, Mr. Carter?
Commissioner, I have a question. I have a concern about the budget amendment presented by the county clerk.
That's item thirty-five, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're from thirty-one to thirty-four. It is the budget amendment for your office, Mr. Hight, the Sheriff Department?
Okay, thirty-one, three thirty-four, all in order.
Close to pass.
Share the motion.
It's moved by Commissioner Hight, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by a a nine? Or the opposed same side, motion carried. Okay, item thirty-five, this doesn't take action to approve, to approve request for Mr. Dennis Gonzalez to amend the budget to pay an outstanding invoice for the Star County Third Operation, uh, Operational System.
Commissioner and Judge, this is to discuss a budget amendment I had submitted back in December. There was a workshop done where y'all heard some of the items that were discussed earlier along with the operational system in our office. We're getting ready to finish out that contract with Conduit, the company, and I've got seven outstanding invoices at the time. I guess, now that the monies have been authorized to be certified by Mr. Carter, I'd like to dip into that right away. It wasn't originally budgeted into the original budget of the county, but we are in a contract with Conduit, and I need to make payment on that. We're getting ready to change our system, and they're kind of holding our information hostage.
I think it's the way for us to hit the... So we can pass this amendment pending certification and management?
I would not, I would not recommend that.
Let's table it for the projects.
Yeah, I wanted to get onto the agenda because I have a sense of urgency. It doesn't have to happen today, but I wanted to let the commissioners' court know that we are getting ready to finish up that contract. They have already sent me an email that we are seven months behind on payment. I need some information pulled from our system to be collected from our database, and it's kind of a tug-in war right now.
Stay in touch with Mr. Carter, keep it on the agenda?
Okay.
Stay in touch with Mr. Carter.
All right, not a problem, thank you.
Item thirty-five?
I move that we approve.
It's moved by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Hight, any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by a a nine?
Aye.
Or the opposed same side, motion carried. Item thirty-six, this doesn't take action to approve the letter of Mr. Victor Canales on the amendment of the, on the, on the amendment, and addition, addition to the discretionary fund, the revanching budget.
Yes, Commissioners, this is something that I've been in discussions with our auditor. What this is, is our discretionary account, we put it under the purview of the depositary. We've had some line items that we created, and we created our initial budget. And in discussions with Mr. Carter, I think we're working on a fix for that. Today, in order, part of that fix, as Mr. Carter advised me, basically what happens is, I created ten budget items. These are all monies separate and distinct from my county budget. The commissioners' court did not approve this budget, this is, well, it approved the surplus, the discretionary budget, but these are not county monies coming from the county budget. These are monies that are picked up from crime prevention, from defendants, forfeited funds, project funds, all these are separate matters away from the regular county finances. So since this is our first year, we created ten line items, we created a budget out of it. One of those that we failed to include was asset sharing with other entities. When we forfeit, for example, let's oppose $10,000 from an A-diner raid. If four entities participated in it through the SEU, Rio Grande, La Luya, and let's say Escobadas participated, we divided it up equally, a quarter to each entity, 2,500 to each. And so what happened was, we completed the asset sharing, and we basically went way over budget on one of those line items that we had. And so I'm trying to fix that up, and in conjunction, I'm working with the county auditor. He's advised me how we would need to fix it. Basically, one of the methods that we would need is the approval from the commissioners' court to approve a separate account, another separate account, basically to act almost as a enterprise fund where money comes in to it, where we would no longer be depositing into the crime prevention, we'd be depositing to a separate account. And that's basically, that's one of the fixes that I'm hearing, and I think that that might fix the situation once we get with the auditor. So I'd ask that the court approve our creation of a depository of, into the county attorney's crime prevention.
I move that we approve the requests presented by Mr. Canales.
Second, the motion.
It's moved by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Hight, any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by a a nine? Or the opposed same side, motion carried.
Discussion?
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Carter, I'm sorry about that, okay?
Well, I just have to make it clear that the proposed budget amendment as presented lacks a source of funds.
No, no, they're not approving the budget amendment, Mr. Carter. They're not approving the budget amendment, they're approving the creation of the separate account.
Separate account?
Yes, not the budget amendment, I didn't ask for the budget amendment.
Wait with that, no problem.
Yes, sir.
I'll stay here because the next items are mine.
Item number thirty-seven, this doesn't take action to approve a victim's crime act grant application for the next two years, cover for two thousand and ten to the September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, Mr. Canales?
Yes, actually, Judge, if we could take thirty-seven and thirty-eight together, they're the same, basically same together. What this is, is the domestic violence program that my office has run for the last almost decade. We have switched to a two-year grant, Nvoca. This is an eighty-twenty grant. The county receives eighty percent, and then the twenty percent that is left in balance is actually funded to another grant that we, with a relationship that we have with the United Way. They provide the twenty percent, I believe Mr. Carter will attest the fact that this is a grant that gets paid on a monthly basis. I think we started requesting the down payments on every month, and the United Way pays actually at the beginning of the budget year, and so doesn't cost the county too much. If anything, it may cost it this year, or this last year, I don't believe it cost the county any money at all whatsoever.
I move that we approve the application and the resolution presented by Mr. Canales.
It's been moved by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Hight, any discussion?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Not all those in favor signify by a a nine? Or the opposed same side? Seven thirty-nine, it is eleven o'clock, and we go into a suspended session to respect order of seven.
We're back in open session, it is eleven, eleven-ten, and the only item on the agenda is the Order of Salaries, I mean, yes, Order of Salaries?
I move that we approve this procedure.
Second, the motion.
It's moved by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Hight, any discussion? Is that all, is that, are not all those in favor signify by a a nine?
Aye.
Or the opposed same sign, motion carried.
Remove.
Share the motion.
Removed by Commissioner Hight, second by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by a a nine?
Aye.
Or the opposed same sign, motion carried. Meeting has been adjourned.